Meeting to order, could you have a roll call please? Cornelia? Here. Andare?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Corl?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Okay, item number three, discussing the recommendation that Alva City Council be approving this approval of the Entegris healthcare facility permit. As per ordinance number 2014-046.
Kristy, if I may, kind of to maybe set the tone for what I'd like for this planning commission to accomplish tonight, and I, you know, what we're here is to approve or disapprove a permit for an application. We've heard about this application for healthcare facilities permit for the last year and a half. We've asked many questions, we've heard many answers, both, you know, in responses in this meeting, and some of us have heard these similar questions and comments in our council meetings as well. We've, as a committee, also asked a number of questions in writing, and have given all parties a chance to respond to those questions in writing, and we have received those responses for our review. The council will consider this item on its September 19th agenda. I think it's imperative that we come out of this commission meeting with a recommendation for council. I think, given all that we've experienced up to this point, I think we've had ample opportunity to ask questions, receive answers, and I would ask that the discussion that takes place tonight be a discussion that takes place among the commission members. Frankly, I think we've got one side that's one way and one side that's the other way as far as members of the audience is concerned, and we're going to hear more of the same. So I think we should look at the information that's been presented to us, discuss that information, however long we need to discuss it, take any considerations, if we need to go pull previous documents and that kind of thing, we're prepared to do that, to be able to look at the information that we have and be able to give it full consideration. As elected and appointed members of this planning commission, as well as the city council, it's our first and foremost responsibility to protect and promote the citizens of Alva and their needs. When a city, any city, in Oklahoma approves contracts, accepts bids, takes any number of other actions, including the awarding of permits, there may be the potential for unintended harmful consequences to the people and/or the city. And to help ensure that bad things don't happen, we make sure that there's documentation in place to protect both the people and our city for whatever decisions we make. These protections generally include limitations and conditions that our people and our businesses, or our staff as a city, our contractors, our bidders, et cetera, all agree to participate by these rules for the better of everybody, and eliminate the risk to the people in the city. These protections are specifically stated in our code of ordinances, our contracts and bid documents, as well as permits that are ultimately voted on by the city council. In the case of the application for the healthcare facilities permit, the application itself is the document which we are ruling on. The council will be ruling on the application, taking into consideration all the feedback and everything that we've got. The application, though, is the item that will ultimately be judged when it's all said and done. The application is the document that's being judged, and the conditions and limitations that have been put in place are those that are existing in our code of ordinances, and in this case, 2014-046 is the code that this application pertains to. Unlike a contract, the city council may not negotiate the terms of a permit application. Issuing or not issuing a permit is like accepting or rejecting a bid. The application would be like the bidder, and the ordinance would be like the project specs, for, you know, those of you that have been part of, you know, approving bids in the past and that sort of thing. If bids don't satisfy the conditions specified in a project spec, then those bids, the city's not able to alter those bids, once they're submitted, the submitter is not able to alter those bids, and this application's the same way. I've discussed this at length with the city council, and we are not able to suggest changes or make changes to the application that has been presented. Whatever the application states, if the permit is approved, that's what the applicant is In situations where we're looking at bids for contracts, it's similar here, we either approve, reject, or the bids are withdrawn. In this case, we have an application that, and an applicant that is fully aware of the conditions set forth in the ordinance. They've been made fully aware of the concerns and questions of this commission, and have not withdrawn their application, therefore we do have an application to consider this When you look at this application, that's where I find our challenge is going to be, in whether or not this commission can look at the application and feel that there are protections in place for the people of our community. There's no list of services, there's no transfer agreements or credentials with the local hospital, there's no way that we can change what's in the application. The application is what the application is, and I don't think, in looking at the responses we've received, I don't think we've seen any deviation from the intent of the application in the line of question we've received or we've asked. The application is broadly proposing a physician's clinic. Again, it doesn't specify the scope of specialties or services to be provided. Two questions in the application specifically have to do with formal transfer arrangements and local hospital credentials, and the application states, again, that the applicant doesn't need those arrangements to operate their clinic. If a clinic opened in Alva that could do anything it chose, and if this application were approved, there are no limitations set forth in this application. I do feel that without such conditions or limitations, it could possibly hurt Alva, could likely hurt Alva, could likely change the landscape of healthcare in our community, and not necessarily for the better. There may be some small nuggets of healthcare that may be provided, but what then is the risk that it causes for the rest of the healthcare in our community? Again, I want this discussion to take place amongst the commission members. I feel like we have had, in the documentation you have in front of you, you have information from Entegris, you have information from Share Medical Center, and probably the most important information you have is from an independent auditing firm, Ida Bailey, that this is their wheelhouse. They were one of two companies that were recommended by the State Department of Rural Health to provide such a risk analysis for our elected officials here, and they are, frankly, the only party in this discussion that does not have a dog in the fight. When you look through what they have to say, it does say that there is potential risk for the people of this community and the healthcare that's available in the hospital. And I think that is, our discussion needs to stem around their findings, our discussion needs to also go back to the ordinance itself, which lists the criteria for which we award or do not award a permit, and those are real close to the front of your packet in the ordinance, or, excuse me, in the page one of the packet in the italics. I'll go ahead and share those with everybody. "No permit to establish a healthcare center or facility, or to expand an existing non-city hospital shall be issued by the city clerk unless after reviewing the application, the feasibility study, and timely filed written material and responses, the business manager or his designee shall provide to the city council the findings made by the planning commission. The proposed hospital will contribute, or healthcare facility will contribute to the orderly development of a hospital and surgical services in the city of Alva. A proposed hospital or healthcare facility will not cause undue financial or staffing hardship on any existing provider of essential hospital or surgical services in the city of Alva, including permitted facilities not yet completed, which hardship shall be deemed potentially capable of causing the existing facility to alter its services to such a degree that it will adversely affect the citizens of Alva, Oklahoma, and the proposed hospital cannot, or healthcare facility cannot be adequately served by the city's existing utility system and/or infrastructure, and that the proposed hospital or healthcare facility will not cause an increase in the cost of medical care, which would adversely impact the citizens of the city of Alva. The findings of the planning and development commission shall be summarized with appropriate documentation by the business manager or his or her designee, with said findings to be provided to the city council." This commission has to have a four-person, and with the full body here, thank you for that, by the way, we have to have four people to carry a recommendation to city council. You guys need to have four people carry a recommendation to city council. And I will be quiet now and let you guys discuss.
I think out of four, of all four of those situations that it has to meet, there's only one that's really in question, and that's if having Entegris in here is going to have an undue financial hardship against Share Medical Center. The other three are met easily. That's the one we need to discuss, and that's the top one. The Ida report, that's really the only thing we need to discuss, that are like three are met. We've already decided that, it shows here on the next page, we've already decided that. The main thing is, we're causing financial hardship against Share Medical Center.
I'll add, I do apologize, we have contacted Ida Bailey about being at both this meeting as well as the city council meeting, they were only able to attend one, I asked if they attend the city council meeting.
You said they're on it, am I reading this backward, on number one? They're saying that the proposed facility, which is the latest, will contribute to the development of hospital and surgical services?
Would contribute orderly development.
Orderly development, so they're going to...
They're going, like, to send lab equipment, lab board, all that, to their...
And that's a guarantee?
That's not a guarantee, but we've already discussed that, and said that the adequacy feasibility study supported the inclusion of the proposed facility would contribute to the orderly development of the hospital.
Ms. Hamilton, at that meeting that that was discussed, you were not present.
Okay.
Yeah, we discussed that, and we've already agreed on that, that it would contribute, it was June 14.
Okay.
And then on the third item, we concluded that the proposed facility, as kind of presented, could be adequately serviced by the city's existing facility system, since they already got our property that was, I believe, smart. And then the last item, we concluded that the proposed facility would not cause an increase in the cost of medical care. We're trying to raise the cost of medical care for the citizens.
The argument could be made in either of those cases, that the information provided in the application, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't.
How would it ring?
Well, if it were to cause an undue financial hardship, it would be kind of a...
That's one we have a problem with.
Yeah, and...
But I'm talking about the cost of medical care, that we decided it wasn't...
Well, I think they would go together. In the event that it would cause a burden on the hospital, it would then cause an undue burden on the citizens. If the hospital weren't here, then there would be increased financial burden, hardship, medical costs for the people of this town. With regard to the number one, it all comes back to, and I'll draw attention to, in this, the letter that I distributed, and Mr. Dunham has a copy of the contract that's referenced in it, if anybody would like to read that, but on October 21st, which was after the planning commission ruled on the initial permit application, the overwhelming consensus out of this group was, isn't there some way that these two groups can work together? At that point, city council allowed extended timeframes for the two groups to meet. The two groups did meet, and the letter in front of you and the accompanying, it's not, you guys can look at it, we're not hiding it from anybody, it was just a lot of jargon. Essentially, this letter outlines the request that Share Medical Center put to Entegris to offer specialty and services with Share Medical Center as opposed to independently. This letter has not been responded to, either in writing or otherwise, by Entegris. Their not being a response to consider, we could draw kinds of conclusions that maybe they don't have an interest in working with the local hospital. This is information that has been presented to us, either city council or planning commission.
That does actually go back and reflect directly to number one, contribute to the orderly development of hospital and surgical services. They've been asked to work together, and refused by not responding to any of these requests.
And just so the commission's clear, a negotiation of this sort would not require a permit from the city council. No, that would be a...
That would be a contract between Chair and Entegris. So by this letter, Chair's saying we do need it?
Yes, and I think that's what they voiced in this meeting verbally, specialty services.
But not if they're in Chair.
They put in their top priority, specialists, cardiologists, ENT, podiatrists, you're all.
That's if they're in Chair.
Yes, this is an agreement to work with Chair.
However, the application doesn't state.
Which one?
Special.
Well, but I also think that at this point in time, even though that's what Chair wants, you can't say, as someone coming in, I'm going to provide you A, B, and C, and then when we get there, B not being needed, but yet I have this, I have a doctor here that's doing it up, so...
That's the concern with the application, is that the application doesn't specify a scope of services. And so, whereas intentions may be that we're going to do X, Y, and Z, well, all of a sudden, you know, X, Y, and Z aren't working, our permit allows us to do A, B, and C as well. And where then is there, a clinic is, and you guys have been utilizers of the healthcare system, and either here or other places, and clinics can be very robust, clinics can be, you know, a single provider. A very robust clinic might very well, and is very likely to, have a harmful impact on the hospital services that it provides. Again, and I go back to what I started out with, there are no protections offered to our citizens in the event that that might happen. The application is approved or it's not approved. Once the application is approved, the applicant can do, is only bound by the limitations set forth in the permit that they receive based on the application they presented. If we were building a fire station, and we went out for bids, and we got a bid that said, we're going to build you a fire station for X amount of dollars, and that's all it said, we could never consider that. I mean, it would not, we would have to have some certainty as to, you know, how many bays is it going to have? Will it have sleeping quarters for so many people? What's the, you know, technology capabilities? What are any number of other considerations that we would need just to make sure that we didn't approve a $2 million contract to build a fire station, but then that fire station not be what we thought it was going to be? It's kind of the same situation here. The application, and the council has told me over and over again, we can't tell them what to put in their application, we can't change their application, we can't alter it once it's permitted. We are essentially taking what they've applied for and saying, yes, what you have put in your application is fine, and that, being that the scope is so broad, that gives me concern, it gives a lot of citizens great concern. And I know we've got citizens on the other side as well, but that gives a lot of citizens great concern, that they've twice voted over 75% in favor to tax themselves to support It's not to say that the specialty services that are mentioned aren't needed in this community, it's not to say that at all. It's to say, but what if that doesn't work for the applicant, then what could they do, and could that potentially be harmful?
If they were to change any part of the business, would they have to reapply to the current circumstances?
Pardon me?
If they were to change anything in their, what they were offering, would they have to reapply for, if they were to approve it when they put Entegris in that building? If they wanted to change something, would they have to reapply to the permit?
Well, based on their application, they wouldn't have to change any, their application gives them an entire scope of anything that could possibly be performed in a medical clinic, or a healthcare, physician's clinic. So, you know, there are...
But not...
Well, but, just think about it, that could be x-ray, that could be lab, that could be minor surgeries, it could be a number of things that could be, and they wouldn't be required to submit another application.
Under this application, that's free...
I'd like to say thank you to both sides for answering the questions. They really helped. helped.
It doesn't seem unreasonable to me that the broad application is wrong, and what they put in there is wrong. Because, I mean, I see what you're saying, but if it was my business coming in, I would want to leave myself open to offer something else if that need became available. You know, if I was going to open a Chinese restaurant, you know, for example, and nobody wanted another Chinese, and my Chinese food sucked, what do you want? I would, you know, I can see why it's broad.
I think the biggest concern here, as mayor, is the economic impact that healthcare has on our entire community. And we're looking at, and I'm happy to, I don't know if that's any of the information we have here, but I'm happy to go get that information and present to you. But we're looking at approximately a $25 million economic impact for healthcare. About 19 million of that, 19 to 20 million of that is Sher Medical Center. The rest of it is, you've got pharmacies, you've got another nursing home, you've got eye doctors, chiropractors, dentists, physical therapists, and, you know, the intent of this ordinance was to make sure that our city would have hospital care. Emergency room and hospital beds that our people would have access to that wasn't 70 miles away. Hospitals are closing everywhere, and, you know, numerous in Oklahoma, Sayer, Frederick, there's a handful more, I'm not going to be able to, you know, recite off the top of my head. And the economic negative impact that those communities are experiencing almost instantly is enough to break the city. I mean, I look at, as mayor, I sit in our financial committee meetings every other week, and we see an economic downturn that may never, you know, have an opportunity to stabilize if we don't have a hospital in our community. You know, I've heard many, many other times, whether it be the university, as far as sending students to school in a town that didn't have a hospital, and forget about athletic programs or the nation's largest rodeo team. That's almost riding our own ticket to send Northwestern to Enid. We... The citizens have invested so much into the hospital by voting the sales taxes in, that the ordinance was in place to protect that investment. Right, if you're bringing in any other kind of business, you're absolutely right. Competition is good, and it's not the same deal as it is here. Hospitals aren't opening anywhere. Hospitals are closing. And do we want to make decisions that safeguard our hospital, or, you know, do we roll the dice on something that, you know, might be a little bit of good for a much greater loss? The ordinance had been reviewed by the applicant as they prepared their application. Those are the conditions and limitations set forth in order to issue a permit. I would hope they read that thoroughly. I know they were provided with the information, and they acknowledged receipt of the ordinance and intent to comply. And I think the hospital is something that if, forget about any one person that works at the hospital, think about the 180 jobs that are gone. Think about the 70-mile ride to Enid when you have a stroke. Those are life-changing possibilities. Does this application protect us the way we need to be protected for our citizens to get the healthcare they need? No, but do we hold the hammer that drives the nail, or do we? That's the way I look at it.
There aren't any guarantees, but several times, this town has come together to ensure the future by voting on the sales taxes to support our hospital. To me, we have guaranteed that we're going to support it. So when you say there's no guarantees in place, I think people in this town might argue differently, that we are trying to guarantee that we want to make sure our hospital survives. But you can only do that if you're willing, if this group and city council is willing to ensure that that happens. By doing things that are going to make that more difficult, citizens at some point will say, "Enough's enough." But we can't put that hardship back on the citizens. You know, we keep talking about, what hardships is this going to cause? Right here in the ordinance, it says, "To ensure that there is no decrease in the provision of medical services." Okay? There's not going to be a decrease. Or undue financial or staffing hardships. According to I. Bailey, there's five areas that new patients, or patients for the new clinic can come from. Only one of those five areas that those patients can come from is current encounters that Integris sees out of town. The other four, local physicians, urgent care clinic at Sher Medical Center, downtown clinic of Sher Medical Center, future encounters that could be seen by the newly recruited physicians of Sher. So four out of the five places that patients can come from to support this clinic will be coming directly from places that Sher needs to receive those patients from. A new clinic is going to average $300,000 to $800,000 gross. A physician's clinic should be in that area. Even if we go down to the very bottom, $300,000, the new clinic brings in $300,000 of gross. If we look at what I was just mentioning of those five, so if one-fifth of that $300,000 is already going to them, where's the other four-fifths gone from? It comes directly from Sher. Four-fifths of $300,000 will break that hospital, and then it goes away, unless the citizens come together and decide to raise another city sales tax to support it, which is going to be a very, very difficult sale at our current sales tax level, and with what the state legislature is proposing to increase on sales tax as well. So to me, I'm looking at this ordinance, there is an undue financial hardship being put on our hospital by allowing a clinic to come in, regardless of whether they're going to bring in just a PA to see whoever or specialists. I'm glad you bring that up. Thirteen hundred patients, it's 1300 visits. Okay? We can break that down. If somebody's pregnant and has a baby, and we don't see patients for babies here, we don't see cardiac, we don't do a lot of surgeries, and I'm going to have to have Kelly help me on what surgeries and what are not done here, that people are leaving here anyways. So of those 1300, how many of those ever had the opportunity to be seen in Alba? We tried to get that information from Integris, and they didn't provide it. So to me, we have to take that and just say, "Well, if we're not going to have the proper information presented in front of us, I'm not going to use it." So, you know, if you have a baby, you're going to go down to your doctor out of town, because it won't be in Alba. You've got kids, how many times did you have to leave those to go to a doctor?
At least a couple.
So 1500, if we have 100 babies born in Woods County, and they each 12 visits, I'm just, I don't know, kids, there's 1,200 visits right there of that 1,600. So I think it's real easy to say 1,600 people from Woods County are going down to Integris or Enid or somewhere else to be seen, but that's 1,600 visits, not 1,600 individual people or patients.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, and I'll just explain to everybody in the audience, please, if you have any comments, we've given ample opportunity for each department, each side, to answer our questions, both in writing and in person. This commission needs your respect that we can discuss this and come to a conclusion.
And Mr. Colerse, I mean no disrespect by that at all. It's just, when they're not clarified, I tried to get some clarification on that, well, we all did. And the question was, apparently it was a, it wasn't answered. The question, we've got it in front of us, and we've got the answer. So, I mean, if you make your decision off of the answer one way, and I make it the other way, that's fine. That's why we've got six of us here to vote on.
About 8,000, 8,500?
Woods County, yeah, the entire county would be 10 to 12.
And I'll clarify that those can be done at Sher anyway, if the patient chooses. Are they? You know, I don't know. Some, maybe?
There was, and this is just a question, but there was, I read somewhere in all this paperwork that I've had for nearly half, one of the, at the house, that Integris does not believe that the ordinance applies to their facility. Why is that? Have you spoken with them about that? Because I never saw anything about that.
Our legal counsel has told us that this healthcare facility was applicable to our ordinance.
From, and I do know on behalf of anybody, but from what I can tell from the questions that, or the responses that Integris was trying to provide us with, the ordinance addresses a healthcare facility and hospital, and by Integris's view, what they hope to open here in Alba, a clinic in their definition doesn't fit either of those two descriptions. It doesn't fit the description of a healthcare facility, and it doesn't fit the description of a hospital. Now, I can't say that that's absolutely in line with what the Integris thinks, but that seems to me what they're on the page is.
That's where it defines healthcare facility. The ordinance defines, page two.
Yeah, and I will, since his honor and reverence, that I would say, reading the definitions provided in the ordinance, it seems relatively broad, the definition of a healthcare facility. So anything where healthcare can be provided on a non-overnight, less than 24-hour basis would seem to be what the city council has seen to define a healthcare facility as. But I think that there are some, I think that there are some largely academic debates that could be held on the exact definition, or the difference between a healthcare facility and a physician clinic.
The ordinance that our city has adopted is consistent with what other cities, such as Stillwater, Oakine, I think there's...
There were six that we had.
There were six other Oklahoma municipalities that had adopted the same language.
Like Norman, they had one.
Norman, yes.
I think attorneys can argue whatever they want. We have to go through the ordinance as it's written. That's what we have to go by. I mean, I can read you the definition if you'd like.
Funny, further is about, if they really feel that it's not something that pertains them, regardless of what the council ultimately decide on permit, if their attorney feels it's not a permit, then they should probably go ahead and open the door.
Over our proof.
I do appreciate the incitings that we got from Integris on the questions pertaining to credentialing and transfer agreements. I thought that they did a very good job of outlining for us the, in the scope of the practice that they plan to open, those things wouldn't necessarily pertain, and that's why they weren't provided for.
I think what gets missed in that is the purpose of the ordinance, and the way the application is written, that those are two common practices that facilities will have when they work with hospitals.
Right.
And to the spirit of the ordinance, to promote the orderly development of healthcare for this community.
No, I saw that too, but I did think that it was, I did think that it was at least appropriately explained as to why they wouldn't see those. I don't know that it weighs in on anybody's decision necessarily, but I do appreciate the effort put into the ordinance. the effort put into the ordinance.
My opinion that with the information that we've been provided and the discussion that we've had with both sides, that there's, through the IBALE, that there is no evidence pointing to the fact that a new clinic will not produce undue financial hardships on our hospital that's existing today. We've all agreed that everything else can be met. I still think there's some question on the... I still think there's some question there that that could go either way, that coordination efforts may not work out. That being the case, that you can't prove undue financial hardship through any of the documents and discussions we've had, I would make a motion to deny this application because of that.
Do you have a second?
One second.
Miller?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Horace? Hamilton? Adair?
Yes.
Thank you guys for your diligence, your discussion, and for serving this community. I really appreciate it.
Have a motion, please, or some? Kelly?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Horace?
Jerry?
You're voting to the right.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes.
And thank you all for being here.